Tyler, is your audio working?
We're live.
Okay. Welcome to the Montgomery County Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 20th. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be livestreamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County, will be available on local public access television, DATV, and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohi.org, per guidelines approved by House Bill 197 and extended by House Bill 404. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here. Before we have Carl Keith is going to talk for just a second, but before that Matt Dunn is here. He's the manager of community programming with HSPD and just talked for a minute about a proclamation. I'm getting ready to read on after school.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioners and County Administrator and esteemed leaders. As Commissioner Dodge said, she has a proclamation and I want to draw your attention to the fact that this week nationally is known as After School Professionals Appreciation Week. And as we all know, students benefit from extra supports through academic enrichment, social emotional learning, healthy lifestyles and more. And we have a number of organizations in the community that are committed to quality out of school time versus that time being perceived as babysitting or recreation. These organizations make up the Summer and After School Collaborative, which is mentioned or which is managed by Learn to Earn Dayton. There are at least 15 organizations and a number of community partners that make up the collaborative, which started with just a handful of organizations in 2015. Some of the organizations are faith-based, some are neighborhood-based, some are in schools, and others are freestanding. Some organizations provide mentoring and tutoring across multiple school districts. And several of these organizations are supported by Human Services Levy Funding, and they function within collective impact projects to serve their youth and families. These organizations are committed to having trained staff, evidence-based curriculum and programming, family engagement, and continuous quality improvement, all with a focus on increased school attendance, reduced behavioral problems, and student success with third grade reading and eighth grade math proficiency. Just as all of us and all of our schools and families experienced a lot of uncertainty throughout the pandemic, after-school programs did as well, but they've risen to the challenge to make sure families and youth continue to be served. In the absence of seeing youth on-site for a good part of the year, programs performed wellness visits and frequently delivered food and other household items to families. Many used CARES Act funding to upgrade their technology so they could offer online programming and even one-on-one support such as virtual mentoring and tutoring. Many have operated hybrid models but are looking forward to summer programming and continued programming and services when kids go back to school in the fall. Current priorities for these programs are social emotional support and addressing learning loss to help youth catch up and not get further behind. The work they do is commendable in any year, but especially in the last year, they have gone above and beyond. I participate regularly in the meetings of the collaborative, and I know personally how committed these organizations are and how much they appreciate your support. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just read the proclamation. It's "Whereas after-school programs provide academic enrichment, social emotional support, opportunities for recreation and physical activity and activity and a safe place and a meal for our county's youth. And whereas after-school programs provide additional services such as wellness checks to ensure the basic needs of youth and their families are being met. And whereas after-school professionals have endured their own trauma while adapting to ever-changing circumstances to deliver services in new ways during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas participation in summer and after-school programs is known to lead to improved school attendance, fewer disciplinary problems, and increased academic success. And whereas Montgomery County is fortunate to have the Summer and After School Collaborative and its many partner organizations committed to quality out-of-school time for youth. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio does hereby recognize, honor, and appreciate after-school professionals, organizations, and community partners who work tirelessly to make a difference in the lives of the young people in our community and does hereby proclaim National After School Association for April 19th through the 23rd, 2021." Thank you.
Thank you.
Signed by three county commissioners. Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, next up, Carl Keith Auditor Awards Update.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Dodge, Commissioner Lieberman, Commissioner Rice, Administrator Colbert. Thank you for the opportunity for to speak with you just for a few minutes this afternoon and to share with you some really great news on behalf of the county and our finance team regarding our financial reporting and financial management. We've recently learned that we received two awards that I want to share with you. First of all, the we received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for our financial report that was prepared and submitted for 2019. This is the 35th year in a row that the county has received a certificate of excellence in financial reporting. So again, we're just very pleased to win that award again. But in addition to that, we also received the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. And this is the Auditor of State, State of Ohio, Keith Faber awarded us with this. And this award recognizes that we have had a clean audit. And by clean audit, there were no question cost, no financial concerns, and we met a number of other stringent financial criteria. I know Mr. Colbert was well familiar with some of these criterias. And so we are so pleased that we were able to get this, the Clean Audit Award, Award with Distinction from the Auditor of State. Only 4% of local governments in the state of Ohio that are that are eligible meet the requirements that were for this award. And so we're just so proud to be part of such an exclusive group. And so this year is really special, I think, in getting both the Certificate of Excellence from GFOA and the Auditor of State's Award because of some of the challenges that we all had to overcome, as you well know. First of all, in order to complete our financial report during the pandemic was challenging. A lot of the work had to be done remotely. Even the Auditor of State examiners, their auditors that were working on the report had to do a lot of their work remotely, and we had to coordinate some of that with them. So that was a challenge. But at the same time, we did this while we were doing the financial report, we were implementing a new financial system. And a lot of the same people that worked on the financial report also worked on the implementation of the financial system. They were really doing dual duty. And so it was very difficult to get through this. So I'm very proud of in order to get these reward awards under these circumstances. And also the Auditor of State's Award by saying that there were no question cost and no financial concerns really speaks to financial management throughout county government. You know, this is our financial managers throughout county government. Their insistence on proper procedures and proper controls and doing the right thing and not spending money wisely and being proper stewards of county resources. It really speaks to that is what it is what it says. This is the fifth time we've won the Auditor of State's Award with distinction. So, you know, and this is a tremendous undertaking. County government is a $2 billion a year enterprise and with, you know, hundreds of users on the financial system. And so we really, really are proud of everyone who's been involved in this. And of course, that includes the Office of Management and Budget, includes the County Treasurer's Office, of course, the Prosecutor's Office, the Engineers' Office all play a role and a big role in the county's financial reporting. And so we really, while we accept this award on their behalf, we know that this is a team effort throughout county government, and I just want to thank them and commend them for a job well done.
Well, congratulations to you and your staff. Carl, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. All I was going to say is we may have been honored to get it 35 years, but you can't take any of that for granted. So every year is critically important. And having been the county treasurer for a number of years, I know the importance and how well everyone works. So honestly, kudos to everyone involved every day and every way. And hopefully with this new financial system, reporting and everything is it will be even better for everyone more into the future.
There'll certainly be some challenges to overcome.
I know. It's always starting. There's always the challenges. But you're going to master, everybody's going to master it, and it's going to be better. But honestly, please tell everyone, we all know how much it takes to earn these, and we don't take it for granted. And so thank you. And I think it speaks well from Montgomery County that we really do live the ethos of collaboration and working together for the good of the community. So this is just another shining example of that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Daddy. Yeah. I'd just like to say, having, sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
No, I'm just going to say congratulations to Carl and to staff and everyone involved. It's quite an honor. So, thank you.
You know, Carl, for you and I having worked on both sides of this thing, both of us coming from the Auditor of State and now working at the county, you've brought that same level of excellence, I think, into county government from the Auditor of State. And so I commend you and your staff, and thank you for mentioning the whole county because this takes a team.
It does.
Just keeping us as a low-risk audit team is huge, but the ability to get both awards in a single year, that is, that's huge for the county. So congratulations to you and your team, but also recognizing Office of Management and Budget, the Treasurer, and all the other financial offices that work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. County Engineer, Paul.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have three resolutions today. The first is Resolution 21414 to approve the grant of an ingress egress easement to the Five Rivers Youth Rugby Foundation, Inc., for county-owned property located on Shiloh Drive in Harrison Township. Commissioners, this resolves a bad situation that's existed for a number of years and provides legal access for the youth rugby as well as protects the county from any liability from a bridge that's not on a public road. 415 is to amend the agreement with Brumball Construction, Inc., for the Bell Fountain Road Bridge Replacement Project Design and Build by adding $5,000 to the original amount for a revised total of $807,889. And 416 authorizes a payment by warrant in the amount of $96,090 to the City of Dayton for permissive tax funds for the 2018 Dayton Bridge Maintenance Project.
Commissioners, before you approve, I just want to thank Paul and his team on Resolution 414. As Paul mentioned, you know, this is, this has been a challenge for some time. And to be able to get this taken care of now took a collaborative effort. So thank you, Paul, and thanks, your team, for moving forth on this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I move to approve. Second.
All those in favor. County Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 417, approve the Ohio Department of Public Safety Office of Criminal Justice Services Equipment Inventory Report for the Recovery Ohio Grant.
Move for approval. A second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Common Police Court.
Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 418, authorizing payment by warrant in total amount of $5,989.73.
I move for approval. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
County Administrator.
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's Office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on April 13th, 2021, and April 15th, 2021. Resolution 419, approval of bills, and that list is available in the Clerk's Office. We also have Resolution 420, adopt the Montgomery County Board of County Commissioners Electronic Signature Policy pursuant to ORC Section 1306. Commissioners, I would like to tell you that our clerk has done an excellent job, Emily Bradford, of working on modernization for not only just for electronic signature, but for also workflow to make sure that the amount and the volume of resolutions and the paperwork thereof is streamlined as much as possible. I'd also like to commend the Prosecutor's Office for supporting Emily in this project. So thank you, Emily, and thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I move for approval. I second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Administrative Services, Tyler.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have a large number of resolutions for your consideration today as well as one late item. The first resolution is 421. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's Office. 422 authorizes the purchase through a GSA Schedule 70 contract with Kara KaraSoft for DocuSign Enterprise Pro Edition DocuSign Retrieve and Support Services for the Clerk of Commission's Office in an amount not to exceed $18,156.34 through April 19th of 2022. Resolution 243 authorizes a service agreement with Zix Pharmacy for COVID-19 Vaccine Clinics for Stillwater Center employees and residents through December 31st of 2022. 424 authorizes an intergovernmental agreement with Regis Commission to provide development and database services for Justice Web in an amount not to exceed $138,900 through April 19th of 2022 with auctions to renew. Resolution 425 extends the price agreement with Crown Personnel Services Incorporated for temporary staffing services for various county departments through May 31st of 2022. The next two resolutions solicits bids. The first is 426 for the Municipal Court Trotwood New Building Project at an estimated cost of $5,637,463.38. And 427 for the Administration Building 10th Floor Hearing Room Renovation Project at an estimated cost of $641,061. In the last two resolutions on this agenda, authorized purchases from Ohio Machinery Company for the Environmental Services Department. The first is 428 for two Caterpillar M318 wheeled hydraulic excavators in an amount not to exceed $536,466. And 429 is for one Caterpillar 950M wheel loader in an amount not to exceed $302,671. And the late item is Resolution 439, and this authorizes a rental agreement with Primetime Party and Event Rental for a tent for the Earth Day Garden Dedication for the Communications Department in an amount not to exceed $1,523.70.
Tyler, before the Commissioners approve, you want to talk a little bit about Resolution 426 on the Municipal Court.
Sure. This is a project that's been years in the making, beginning with a study of our court, municipal court operations, both on the eastern and western side of the county. One of the recommendations that come out of that study was to move the court in New Lebanon to an area in which a higher percentage of the population use court services as well as to an area that included a current bus line. So this project is a great project. It will move the court in New Lebanon to Trotwood. It also includes departments from our Job and Family, or offices for our Job and Family Services Department as well as our Workforce Department for residents in the in the area to take advantage of the services offered in our human services realm, especially for those who are using court services already.
Commissioners, that is the part of the court that's really going to be state-of-the-art. It'd be a first of its kind in the nation as far as bringing in the social services and the workforce components along with the court. Part of our goal as we move forward with these type of projects to meet the public where they're at. So thank you, Commissioners, for your support. Thank you for the work on this, Tyler, you and the facilities team along with our clerk of court.
Thank you, Michael. And, and you know, the placement of this court, I think, is so important because it's going to be in an area where there's been a lot of, will be a lot of growth in Trotwood. And, and we know when, when things are, more than one thing is put around something, you know, you have better growth and better stability. So I'm looking forward to this for Trotwood. Thank you. And the whole western part of the county, actually. Thank you.
Well, to your point, Commissioner, if I could just add to that, you're absolutely right. We're going to also have a new library in Trotwood. We're also going to have the new goodwill facility. So along that line, we'll have all of the kind of both the social and uplifting aspects to really, to really meet people where they're at. So thank you again for your support for this project.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's great. And, you know, we've been talking about this for years, and I just, I'm just excited that it's finally, finally picking up some steam here. So, thank you.
I agree. So I enthusiastically move to adopt. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Environmental Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have two resolutions for your consideration today. First one is 430 to authorize an agreement with CG Construction and Utilities, Inc., at their lowest and best bid of $2,399,900 for construction of the Lynn Haven and Meyer Water Main Replacement Project through August 18th, 2022. And 431 authorize a request for qualifications for consulting services for the Sanitary Sewer Hydraulic Modeling and Flow Monitoring Project.
I move for approval.
All those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
OMB, John.
Hi, good afternoon. OMB has five resolutions for your consideration today. 432 authorize appropriation amendments. 433 to authorize additional appropriations. 434 authorize cash transfers. 435 to authorize appropriation amendments by transfer from general fund contingencies. And 436 to establish a special revenue fund, Fund 296, Subfund 296106, known as the American Rescue Plan Act Grant.
I move to approve. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Human Services, Tom.
Good afternoon. I have two resolutions for this afternoon. The first is from Human Services Planning and Development. As you're aware, you appoint the Human Services Levy Council to make review of the activities and, and work that goes on throughout the community with the Human Services Levy. The Levy Council has completed its work for this period of time in working with the agencies, working with the boards, and working, looking throughout the community at what the current needs are and what actions are appropriate as they look towards November of '21 for the next Human Services Levy. Today, they are providing you with their recommendation on what that should look like and starting that process in motion. They are providing you with a recommendation which, in effect, will not increase taxes in looking forward over the next four years for the Human Services Levy. So what they're providing you with today is Resolution 437, which will accept the recommendation of the Human Services Levy Council and request the auditor to certify the total current tax valuation in anticipation of a renewal of 8.21 mils of an existing levy and to supplement the general fund for the purpose of health and human or social services for Montgomery County residents. So as I indicated a moment ago, this is a renewal. The intended purpose is to not increase taxes to the citizens of Montgomery County. And this is a levy that, you know, this is the first step of the process. There'll be another resolution that comes forward a little bit later, but this is how we begin the process. Then I have a second resolution, which is under Job and Family Services, 438, which will authorize the agreement with the Montgomery County Board of Development and Disability Services for short-term placement services for the Children's Services Division. Those are my two items.
Okay, I move for approval of both.
I second. All those in favor.
Aye.
And I have to give a real quick shout-out to our Levy Council because I know they work so hard and look at all of our agencies' needs. And, and I also want to thank the agencies because this has not been easy because of all the increase, especially this past year with the pandemic, the needs that are there. So we appreciate everything they're doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments by citizens?
No.
No, okay. Comments by county administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, since Thursday is Earth Day, I think it's a great time for us to recognize our team at Environmental Services. So far this year, the Solid Waste Our Transfer Station has turned more than 1,500 tons of yard waste into mulch. Now, if you remember, a few years ago, we were spending money on yard waste, and now we have turned it into a viable business. They're also properly recycled 6.3 tons of commingled recyclable material, and that's just the numbers from January and February. Additionally, our communications team at Environmental Services, along with our intern, Antonio Mobley, have created a TikTok video featuring one of our employees, Lisa Berry, who talks about what it's like to be a wastewater operator at the Western Regional Plant. That video rolls out next month, and I believe there are several more TikTok videos planned in preparation for Earth Day. So thank you, Commissioners, again, for your support for Solid Waste Transfer Station, our team at Environmental Services, our water sewer workers, our plant operators. They're all doing a great job, and we can't do it without your support. So, thank you.
Well, all three Commissioners, all three of us are going to be celebrating Earth Day this Thursday at the Christ United Methodist Church in Kettering. There will, we will be announcing the Dayton Regional Bring Your Green Challenge. This year, the challenge will be a giving garden. The church has a giving garden that they have already started, and so we're also going to be taking a look at that. And the Bring Your Green Giving Garden Challenge will ask competitors to do their gardening tasks in a way that encouraging encourages food donations, reduces water usage, restores biodiversity, and other sustainable and regenerative growing practices. So I think it's going to be a great way to celebrate our Earth Day, Thursday.
Yes, it will be. Let's hope that all the snow has disappeared by then.
I know.
But, um, yeah, we always enjoy celebrating Earth Day and everything that goes around it, and we're just, we're looking forward to that day. So this is another, this is a cute story. So construction began on March 29th on a bridge replacement, and the contractor, Outdoor Enterprises Troy, has to replace a large pipe, there it is, a large pipe that crosses Whip Road so that, so part of that road has to be closed and will continue to be closed for about six more weeks. And the road closures by Paddington Road and John Hole School. And the construction project got the attention of some special people. There they are, right there. Lindsay Locker, second grade class from John Hole School made thank you cards for all the construction workers. And that's, we, I think that is, it's such a great learning lesson for the kids, but it's just, I'm sure it meant a lot to the, the construction team. And then they, as you see, they delivered those cards in person. Paul, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, Commissioner, this came as a total surprise to all of us. We didn't solicit this to be done or anything like that. I guess we handed to the teacher for coming up with the idea and the kids for, for doing the cards, and construction workers certainly appreciated that. They don't often get that kind of a thank you.
No.
Usually somebody driving by shouting at them for having the road closed. So, yeah, it's very much appreciated, and thanks to the school and the teacher and the kids.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, and it's a great way to teach kids to be grateful for workers like that. We see workers every day that we don't think about, you know, how important they are. So I think it's a great.
And I'm sure she probably also, the teacher, you know, talked about why they're doing it and that big pipe that runs, you know? I think that that was probably really a great lesson for everybody.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, you know, children in our community mean so much to us, and we really want to do our best to ensure their safety and controlled, I mean, continued growth. So I'm going to talk about our need for licensed practical nurses and habilitation providers for Stillwater Center. So anyone watching our meeting here, please look onto our webpage for current job openings. And I have to tell you, we've had to get pretty creative getting these positions filled quickly and by the best qualified candidates. Our recruiting team held a virtual hiring event and was able to hire 3000. and by the best qualified candidates. Our recruiting team held a virtual hiring event and was able to hire three employees for Stillwater. They also held a virtual hiring event for Children's Services for child welfare caseworkers to join the intake department. They actually conducted seventeen interviews, made eight offers, and were able to hire five individuals. And, uh, all of us would really emphasize that these are such important and critical positions, and we truly appreciate the work that these employees are doing. And as we say every week, it's never been harder than during the times that we've experienced over the last year with the pandemic and going forward. So, the critical, uh, so very important to find, uh, people with the skills and experience and passion for the mission. So, if you know anyone, or if you're one of those, please look at our webpage, um, and come in. We are hiring. And I also want to say, uh, it's, it's so difficult right now. Um, but to our recruiting team, thank you for your ingenuity, your flexibility and creativity. Um, I know, uh, when you're looking for good people, you'll try anything. And, uh, this is, uh, kind of a new way for us to reach out to the community and let them know that we are always, always, always looking for great people, uh, and these are such important jobs. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone involved.
Okay, uh, before we adjourn, you know, I have to do my regular, regular little show and tell. Please, please keep, what, keep wearing your masks. It's not over yet, uh, socially distancing and wash your hands. I can't, I can't say that enough. And also, please, sign up and get your vaccine. Um, it's very important. Okay, our next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, April twenty-seventh. I can't believe it's coming at the end of April's, right around the corner.
I move to. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we go to the Air Hill Bridge Reconstruction Project.
As Commissioners, uh, we have, this is the viewing, uh, we will need to purchase a little bit of property for the project. So, we have to have a viewing and a hearing. The hearing will be next week. And Joe Dura is our project manager, will be giving you a little presentation.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Joe will share his screen.
Uh, we'll do that right now.
And I, I will point out that, uh, you'll be seeing our new logo here. Uh, we've just updated our logo. This is the first time anybody's seen it, I believe, outside the office.
I like it.
We, we decided.
I like it too. Big improvement.
We decided to put the bed, the T-square in the old surveying instrument that were in the logo.
I like the colors.
Yeah, so.
Right, right.
Our letterhead will have the, the center part of it on there, not the circle, but this will be on our trucks and be used for different things like that.
Oh, nice.
It's just a bridge and a road, so that should last forever.
There you go.
Okay, Joe.
All right, I appreciate it, Paul. Thank you very much, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. So, this is the viewing for the Air Hill Road Bridge Reconstruction Project. This particular bridge is located in Perry Township, immediately south, southeast of the city of Brookville. Uh, the bridge is immediately west of the intersection of Air Hill Road and Keener Road. Zooming in a little bit more, uh, though in a rural area, there are some single-family unit homes adjacent to the, uh, the project site. Overall scope of the project is to replace the existing structurally deficient superstructures, the beams of this bridge, uh, keep the existing, uh, alignment of the road, but improve the profile to accommodate the new bridge and try to match, uh, more of the posted speed limit that's out there. And then upgrade the guardrail to current standards and provide some better safety grade. Going over some existing conditions, photo on the left is looking at Air Hill Road. We're looking eastbound. Photo on the right is showing the north edge of the beam of the bridge. You can see the discolored concrete in the beam. Uh, the white is efflorescence. That's showing, uh, salt water starting to reach and get inside the beams and come through. And then on the south side, uh, photo on the right is showing a hole in the edge of that beam. So, it's due to these structural deficiencies, the structural conditions that this, this bridge needs some work done. And specifically, we need to replace those old beams, get new beams on there. To do that, uh, we will need to, uh, do some temporary easement, uh, specifically to the southwest quadrant, the, the owner, parcel number one. Um, this is just to be able to tie the driveway into the new profile of the road, the new vertical elevations of the road. And again, that is needed to accommodate the new structure design of the bridge. So, uh, looking at an area again, so we're talking of this image, the bottom, you know, bottom half of the road, just to the left, you can see their existing driveway there. The temporary easement is for tying the drive into the newly, uh, constructed roadway. And it's just the very southern limit of that drive, just to tie it in, make sure the grade of the driveway is, uh, appropriate for vehicles to come and go. Here's a, a street view of that drive. There is, uh, curb and gutter actually along this driveway. That'll remain, and it could get extended actually up to the edge of the roadway. Otherwise, the asphalt drive will be pla- replaced with asphalt drive. And, uh, you can see as you go down the driveway, there's some decorative plants. Those will not be affected as part of this project. So, um, the design for this project's in-house, uh, we will, the right-of-way is gonna be determined by a real estate appraiser. We currently estimate the construction to be about four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And we have secured a grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission for a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for eligible project costs. For the schedule, uh, we've completed the design. We're now entering into the right-of-way phase of the project. Look to advertise and award the project, uh, start advertising in December of this year, award in January twenty-two with construction spanning from March twenty-two through May of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Air Hill Road will be required to be closed while this work's going on for roughly about forty-five working days. Detour for this particular project from Air Hill Road will utilize Johnsville-Brookville Road, Westbrook Road, and Wolf Creek Pike. And with that, if anyone has any questions?
Uh, no real questions, but how old is the bridge that it would get in that condition?
Believe this bridge was built in the mid nineteen-sixties. It's just due to, as time goes on, uh, if the wearing surface, there's, underneath the asphalt, there's a waterproofing material. Over time, that'll, the decay, especially on these edges of the beams, the salt water from the snow and ice control will, over time, migrate down into the concrete. And when you get the freeze stall effect, it'll start with a delamination, the concrete separating in layers, and then you'll get spalling that looks like a pothole essentially in the bottom of these beams. And over time, just, it starts breaking apart. So, we start losing strands and through our annual inspection, that's why we track this. And this bridge has now reached the end of its useful life, warranting our need to get the beams, not substructure, just the beams, replaced.
Wow. I'm not even a bridge expert, and I can see the need.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The, the residents that are affected, they've been notified. This is coming up?
Yes, ma'am. They've received notifications for the viewing and hearing itself, and, uh, so they've all received letters. And then the, the one owner that will require temporary will reach out to them, uh, once every, uh, once we are ready to do that after the hearing.
Okay, okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, I move to adjourn.
Okay, I need to see that, but that's okay. Well, so, adjourn for the hearing. Let's adjourn.
All right.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay, bye.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.